Okay. All right, well, welcome to the March 20th, 2023 Village Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board Meeting. My name's Dan Olson, I'll be filling in for Jeff Pollak today as the Chair of tonight's meeting. Before we get started, does anybody need to recuse themselves for any reason?
I do not.
No, I'm in reference.
Okay, nor do I. Do we have a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Member Evans?
Yes.
Number Thurl?
Yep.
And we're also.
Yes. All right, so there's only three of us up here, there should be five. Jeff, do you want to announce how we usually plan for that?
Yeah, I mean, you're, anybody this year can have, is entitled to have a full membership vote. So you don't, depending on how you're thinking the board, the three members are thinking, you may ask for the adjournment of your application to get a full board here. We will do that.
Okay. So let's start with the first item on the agenda, Eduardo Torado.
Chair.
Hey, guys, want to come up here?
Yeah.
I'm gonna chair here.
Thank you.
That's a good idea. That's a good one. So I think meeting what we have on March 6th, that was kind of like actually helping us to see where we are. And we pretty much understand that you don't want to let us go with aluminum clad windows.
Correct.
That's the reason why we propose now.
You are entitled to a vote on that subject if you want to vote. We've actually never officially denied your request. But you indicated that you wanted to make an amended application, so we accepted that.
Yep. Yeah, and then for this reason again, we want to proceed with all wood windows with two questions again. You know, one question will be on rear elevation, we have three windows. In one, it's kind of like really core with porch, and the other two is really nothing much exposed to the other houses. And on our back side of houses, large barn or garage, that's kind of like blocking really from any view. And one question will be if we can keep these three windows like aluminum clad. Style, size, everything will be same. And then second question will be on the rest of windows, if we can just keep frame, you know, from these windows. And then all sashes, of course, will be changed to all wood with grills and everything. And which, that will help us a lot.
Sure, but it's the sash are what's in poor condition. The frame and the operating mechanisms, pulls that certain weights.
They're all gone.
They're all, oh, because everything.
It's replacement. Yeah.
So when you say the frame, you're just talking about the framing lumber that frames out the opening?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I want to say also, these wood frame, because it's aluminum clad or joint, there's kind of like over outside, one small section of aluminum still there. You know, and that will be kind of like steel, steel there if we change to wood, wood sashes. But again, that's kind of like tiny, maybe, you know, half inch less.
I'm not sure that makes a visual or aesthetic difference that would apply to the board, but I'm still unclear about what you're talking about, the, the frame of the window.
Let me explain real quick. They went and bought the incorrect windows, we know that. And they're not just the incorrect sashes, it was the entire casing as well. What they're asking, what they're proposing now.
The casing is the wood trim that goes around the windows. If you look at the outdoor, the casing is the wood on the top and wood on the sides. It's not half the door, the window.
The actual frame.
The window.
They've got, they've got a window.
I want to clarify also that exterior trim will be not touched at all. The exterior trim. You know, really what we're talking, it's kind of like frame, and I will show you here because we have a full, full window. It's, and then these, these frames, it's kind of like core with aluminum here on side. But I will bring in the.
Is it the fin that you nail the window to the, to the wall?
Exactly.
Okay, then I, then I know what it is.
Okay.
It's the nailing fin for putting the window.
Exactly.
Okay, I got it.
Yep.
There I go.
Yep. But the rest, like I said, you know, wood, bottom and top sash, that will be completely replaced to wood, wood, wood.
And will they be single pane or double pane?
Uh, that's glass description is there.
So while Jenny's reading, I think it would be very helpful to make sure the terminology we're using is the same terminology. We've got a window here, I think it would be good to see what they're considering the frame and make sure it matches up.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to just, if it's not in disreference section, it is in the windows section in the code here. Yes, there is a very lovely image of a double hall window.
Yep.
Yep.
That's what we're talking about. Just this portion here.
Okay, the grills on these windows are simulated divided lights, just so my fellow board members know what we're talking about. Mutton profile permanently applied to the exterior of the insulated glass. Double face tape is used to apply mutton to the glass, which first is prepared to. Interior wood and pine, is that? What I'm, what I'm getting at is that there are different types of grills. If you're not doing a true divided light, you both understand what true divided light is.
Yep.
Okay, if you're not doing a true divided light and you're getting a, if you're getting a single pane, standard, traditional, one pane of glass, then the montons, which are the small pieces, can be an appropriate size for the age of the house. If they're insulated glass and they're two panes of glass, that's too heavy for the narrower montons to support. So the montons then become almost twice as large as a traditional mountain.
They are actually five eighths, I think they are specified, five eighths or seven eighths, it's ready, it's kind of like.
I see, they're saying five eighths, seven eighths, one and a quarter, one and a half. But these are applied, they're applied to the exterior of the glass. So what I'm getting at is our design guidelines are called, called for, if you are putting in double pane windows, that any grills you put on are applied to the outside, the inside, and in between the two panes of glass. So that you don't have that visual break between the two panes of glass. This, it looks, it looks as though this is possible with these windows. So as long as, I'm great with putting in the wood windows, by the way. I think it's great, but my condition, my condition, that favorable position depends on those grills on the mountains. So it's, it looks, it looks as though they're calling to put them on the outside. You can put them on the inside, and in glass aluminum grill between glass montons are available. But it seems like that's like an option.
I mean, again, if you highlight exactly what you want, then definitely we can, you know, because we are ordering. I mean, we, we try, we try to have sample for this meeting today and to now, we don't receive yet. But if you highlight or tell us exactly what, what you want, definitely that's no problem.
Just looking to see if there's an official discussion about this.
About window replacement options? Or grills? Fifty-three has some good information on it.
Well, whatever the, whatever information we give our applicant here should be exactly what it says in the code. It doesn't, I don't see a discussion about the montons there. Let me see if it's here in the appendix D. Trying to find a way to, to get this approved tonight.
Yep.
Thank you.
Now, fellow board members, do you agree with my position that if they're, if they're having insulated, double pane glass, which it appears, because we're talking about grills in between, that we need grills on the outside, whether you have them on the inside or not, I guess would be up to you because they're not.
Will be inside and outside also.
So in the, in between and on the outside.
Correct.
Okay. I'm going to circle on this page for grills. Seven eighths of an inch is about typical, and in the midst of this, I've measured my own at home. So I know mine, my house is built in 1912, I know that seven eighths is pretty much standard. There's not a lot of visual difference between five eighths and seven eighths. With seven eighths and one and a quarter. These guys. These guys, so we're talking about outside grills, inside grills, and grills.
Can I see?
We're gonna give you that, yeah, we'll give you that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Those are my only comments on this.
I believe this is a, a good solution to the application at hand.
You sure?
Yep.
Yeah, you want to keep those? How many?
That can be.
We just need to include that one.
You can put them in the, in the record. Any other comments? Would you like me to make a?
No, I just mean, should include that in the motion.
Yes, would you like, are we ready for a motion here?
I think so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the, original to the current, to the current owner of the house, because I don't, they weren't all original to the house. All of the windows in the house which have been removed.
Let me stop you for a minute. I'm concerned about the ones on the rear, that we haven't had a building inspector determine, see, code enforcement officer determination, that they're not visible. So I think the rear can be.
Contingent?
Contingent on that.
Well, I would go personally, I would go with replacing them all this way.
Okay.
And, and if the building inspector later determines that they're not visible.
Which I'm, we are okay with this. Yeah, I mean, we can talk with Steve, that's no problem.
That's an okay.
Yeah, he's doing a really very professional job and, you know.
Okay, and then if it.
And then if it turns out that the rear is not visible according to the building inspector, then you don't have to change him out.
Yeah, I think he will be back from vacation on Wednesday, then we can meet with him and clarify on this item.
I don't think he's here all Thursday morning.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I, I make a motion to approve the application for replacement windows at 74 North Main Street. He has submitted with the following condition and clarification of the application. The grills will match the previously existing wood. The historic, the photographic documentation of the window grill patterns with, with the following condition. The simulated divided lights will be simulated by using the manufacturer's seven eighth inch mutton on the outside of the insulated glass, inside the insulated, the interior, interior side of the insulated glass, and also between the two panes of insulated glass.
Jenny, just for clarification, these are the windows we're talking about. Because this is, this came, this came in today.
Yes.
It's not a part.
I'm sorry, okay, the windows are not, the windows we are looking at are not part of the original application.
Right.
This is the amended application. The date on the amended application is, do you have a date?
Well, actually, the amended application doesn't include those, so these are the windows that came in on today, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we are looking at trim line custom windows. The information is shown on the information provided by the applicant at this meeting.
Okay.
That's the end of my motion.
I'll second.
All right, number Thurl?
Yes.
Number Evans?
Yes.
Number Olson?
Yes.
Motion just to make.
This is one of our panels.
Thank you.
This. Seventy-four North Main Street is a vernacular wood sided residence. Original date of construction is believed to be 1885. The window replacement is in, complies with the village's ordinance and design standards. They're reversible and represents no negative impact on the resource. Are you, are you familiar with this documents?
Oh, yeah, I've seen it in the website from the beginning, yes.
Okay.
Because I, my other house is seventy-three and I always take a look at both, yeah.
I'm just looking at the, check the names here.
The other finding that I would suggest for this is that we had the windows reviewed by one of the village's designated window experts.
Because we're acting as if it's in.
Yes.
And they were deteriorated beyond repair, and his recommendation was to replace them.
Yes, yes, is the, the current position of the board. The owner sought a window inspection. As Jeff indicated by one of our recognized and accepted window evaluators, and determined to be not in sufficiently good condition to be retained. There should be a copy of that document with our, with our original application, I believe it still is in this one as well.
That was from November?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And from this meeting, I think on six, also this topic.
Okay.
I would call Stuart Volger lived in that house. Do you know who Stuart Volger is?
No, no.
He, I don't know exactly what his, what his interest was in college, he went to the U of R. He worked for Mr. Whaley at the Genesee Brewery. And he, he was the guy who would go out and drive around the countryside and find dilapidated buildings, get them for the museum, get them transported and rebuilt there.
Oh, wow.
He lived right next door.
Oh, wow.
Right next door to the little house for many years, he's no longer with us. Surprises me that he lived there.
I think my other house, seventy-three, in the basement, I think it used to be, when somebody was a mayor of the, of the town, the village. And that's in seventy-three, and actually I found this, it taped all these coats, good to call the village, it is a fire.
Oh, wow.
Of this, and a lot.
And a bar.
And a bar.
We're finished on here, right?
Yeah, we're done with this one. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, we can talk with Steve on Thursday, he's back about these back windows.
Yeah.
And I will make him familiar with frame, we can use these frames and, and, you know, sessions will be, please. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
You live this year here?
Yeah. All right, twenty-five South Main Street.
I left a message because we have to sign our application.
Oh, that's right.
Twenty-four Locusts?
Yeah, twenty-four Locusts.
Are you ready or recording? My name is Melissa Valley, I'm an attorney for Knopsha, with Knopsha here for Catherine McCormick. We are seeking a certificate of appropriateness for heat pumps that were recently installed on her property. I'm going to keep what I'm saying very brief because my client did a great job explaining the situation and how we wound up here now. And I would, I just briefly, she would have been here a lot sooner if she had been provided, you know, accurate information from the get-go, but that just didn't happen, she only found out about things in the moment as they were already happening and done. But as soon as she was contacted by the village officials, you know, she promptly submitted a written permit application and signed it, whatever people were put in front of her, to, you know, come in compliance and become here, clearly willing, open to any feedback, thoughts, concerns the board has. So, you know, we're happy to answer questions as well.
Okay.
Could I ask you to? This single location, is that right?
Say that again?
Is this the, the only location?
Yes.
Okay, because there are, there are two photographs that show, and I just wanted to be sure that my assumption was it's the same place was correct.
Well, hang on, hang on, no. Can I, you may if I.
Okay, I, I guess I would rather have the location of them.
Sure.
Indicated on the.
All right, so that's the picture that you see with, we'll just, I'll draw a little box there.
This one?
Yes.
That's correct.
And then there's a second picture.
So this one is on the west.
Yes. The second picture is right next to the asphalt driveway.
This is the.
That's the first one, this is the second photo.
I don't, but I don't see any unit.
Right, so it's, I mean, so maybe, I guess, now, maybe I don't understand the question, but this is something that was newly added to the exterior as part of, as part of the work.
But these are the only two.
But that's the only unit, yes.
Well, pardon, unsightly as they are, downspouts are installed, they're the same way.
Right.
So personally, I wouldn't want it on my house, but when downspouts are all over the place, this, for me, this is not the issue.
Well, best for Virginia.
Well, this is a, this is a big issue, those are not so much.
Okay.
How?
It's on the side of the parking lot, by the parking lot for the church, right? That's where you, the only place you can see it.
Yeah.
But, but this, where is this? This, that's this one, okay.
And just to further, I mean, there are bushes, very permanent, large bushes, and I just walked it today, and a tree like all over this place, I mean, I didn't even get back there because I didn't want to get all muddy, but it, it's well covered, from the street, it's hard to see, yeah, whoever took that picture.
Yeah, it's like three months of the year, they're very well screened.
Yeah.
Right.
Just not now.
I'm not, I don't have other code sections that would refer to screening things like generators, emergency generators and stuff like that.
It is up to the discretion of this board about how they should be screened.
Well, without air conditioning units.
Are you talking about?
Condensing units, sure.
Condensing, same thing. You don't mean window?
No, no, no. But we, I've never seen one presented to our board before.
Yeah, we had one.
Before you were at.
I would think we had one within eight months, you know, there was a side, side unit that was screened. I remember coming forward to board, it was lattice work proposed.
Was that the Generac on church? Because that was.
It was, it was a unit similar to this one, one of the uprights, six months.
Yeah.
What kind of screening would we propose?
Well, it might be, I'm sorry, I mean, it could be natural landscaping. It could be, you know, some kind of wood thing that's appropriate for that residence. I mean, it could be nothing, because whatever you propose may draw attention.
It was on Fountain, in fact, the house on Fountain, and it was lattice, that's what the application was the last time we did this, yes.
Well, they have, they have picket fence on the property all the way.
I walk past your house every day, my dog, I've never seen, I didn't pay any attention to it, I don't feel that it's visible from the street, so that I'm just one person. I don't feel that it's visible if I were to stand in the church parking lot and stare at your home when it's not landscaped. Then yes, I would certainly see that, I, my neighbor on Fountain had one installed, there was no covering.
And we asked our whip when they had looked at, you know, possible locations like that, you know, is there any way to get it behind the six foot fence, but because of, you know, patios and whatnot, that was the safest location, as well as connecting it interior throughout the house.
And from a green footprint kind of point of view, this is where we're all headed.
Yeah, they're popular, we've, I, you know, they are around the village, we've definitely seen them in other homes. So, yeah, where I come from on this, and actually, there, there was a note, if you guys saw the email today from Jeff Pollak about the Landmark Society saying that they have been approved in other historical districts. The, if there was the right way to come to the village, had you known, which is totally fine. I think we would have landed on you guys putting these in this, almost the exact same spot, the actual pumps. For me, I'm, I'm just a little more worried about the, what do you call them, ductwork? Are they painted to match your homework?
See, that's the current color that they came in.
Okay, so one thing that the Landmark Society suggests is that you do paint them.
Okay.
And you'll probably want some sort of primer that sticks well on exterior plastic.
Sure.
Before you paint them, it'll be the same color of your house.
Okay.
As Pendra said, I walk by your house daily, and I think you guys just painted your house.
Yes.
So you guys have fresh.
That's bad.
Yeah, which is good.
We just need a long stretch of good weather.
So I think that that would be something that, had you come to the board, we would also put that in our findings of fact saying that you would, you know, cover these as best as you can with either natural or, or hide them wherever you can best. I think you would, like I said, you would have landed on the same spot with your boards. And then that the ductwork would be painted to match the existing house. And I, if it came to the board before they were installed, I also would have asked for a better layout of the ductwork. And this is just something that I noticed as you walk down church, which is the street behind you, there's, you can, you can see the one on the rear of the house also, that might be out of our purview, it is within line of sight on the sidewalk on church. So it's, the, the ductwork itself is what usually, is what is hanging up in my decision. I think if, we could have asked you to like make sure they go on like right angles and instead of like diagonal across the plab board, but I do believe that there, we will start seeing a lot more of these, and us as a board. and us as a board will probably have to lay out what steps we'll take to approve these so that they have minimal impact to the historic, um, structure.
Well, that's as if, that's what we're doing right now.
Right. But what, where I'm coming from is that how, how, how to, how to develop a policy that
Board policy for this.
That they already have it cut and put these into their, into their site.
I mean, just some other further feedback. She wasn't even quite sure which application she needed to fill out because none of them quite fit this, like there was no application for heat pump. And just wasn't like window or running or.
Yeah.
So it was like construction?
Well, no, no construction. When all fails, if you're adding something, no construction. And then you can explain it's, it's a heat pump.
But I think the board is heading for a policy of some kind on these since they're going to be coming out. I mean, we've done that with, um, solar panels, we've done that with windows. So this may be next in our policies.
So all I'll ask, is there any opportunity to straighten out some of these duct works? Or is that beyond what's already been hap, what's already been done?
I believe that's beyond what's been done because everything is functioning and done. Paint, absolutely.
Yeah.
We can a hundred percent take care of that. The unit on the church side, the outdoor unit, um, we're happy to put up a screen. If you want to wait a look like another month or two to see what happens with the bushes and the trees.
I don't think, no, I don't think a screen would be necessary. Yeah, I think so too.
So just, I would say just painting them. I don't personally have the knowledge of duct work to be able to say whether or not a perfect, like the line is possible to heat where the vents are in their home. I don't feel qualified to, to say they need to rework the outdoor ducts. But I hear what you're saying about the policy and that's something that we should probably have worked on soon to break that part of the code.
It's a shorter distance, you know, when they're going.
Sure.
The shortest distance between two points is a straight line and if they have to go up and over just to, you know, be uniform unless they're forced to do it, you know, this guy.
Right. And that would have probably been something that she would have, you know, if there was a policy or, you know, everything we're talking about, or if Eric knew, I mean, they told her, she didn't even need a permit, so. But she maybe would, Eric, what, the people who did the work, um, which is, are we here?
We get a lot of that.
Yeah. And, and they told her it was all interior, but she maybe would have been able to assess the cost differently for them to run an extra line to do a straight as opposed to diagonal.
You know, it would be X number of square feet, I mean, X number of linear feet times.
The holes in the pipe.
Right.
The holes in the cover.
And then all the things inside. It's like a pot, I mean, there's wires all over the place inside.
They were probably through siding and sheathing and maybe there's insulation in the walls. I don't know. I don't know about your house. Doesn't feel like it now. So removing and if, since it's there already, there would be patching and stuff like that, which might be as a, after, after installation fix might be less, um, not as acceptable as you think it might be.
Yeah.
Do we have guidelines for gutters? Because I, I agree with your point at the beginning. It looks like a gutter to anybody that doesn't know any better, right?
A gutter response?
Looks like a downspout.
I don't think so.
Do we want?
Do we have any?
Jurisdiction of downspouts?
Well, do we have it like, is it written? Is it code? Like, do you know what I mean? It has to be like in the scheme?
But.
And, and if they were putting in an inappropriate gutter on a, a house where they should be round instead of.
I don't think that's what she's talking about. Are you talking about the direction of the downspout run?
Or are we talking about design?
No, I'm talking about the direction because we're talking about the direction as a team, so. But is it, is it specified other than our just discussion?
Well, there, I don't, I don't know that it is. And I'll tell you, and I'll, I don't remember ever seeing it. And you, you may differ, but, uh, the design of gutters and downspouts is actually, actually a lot of mathematical calculation and size and stuff like that, which by the way, most gutter installers don't know anything about. So how typically the only, the only time you have an angled run on a downspout is when you're going from a, uh, a long overhang and you have to come back to the house to have the security of the downspout being fastened to the house. Occasionally, if there's no, if there's, and you have, the downspouts need to be, where the downspouts are located depends on how much roof there is and what size of the gutter. So if you need, say, three downspouts and the one in the middle is coming down onto another roof or something like that, rather than dumping it on the roof, you might want to angle it to tie into one of the outside.
All I was meaning is that this would be the closest part of the code that I think would be comparable that we could use it as a reference. But if that's not explicit and it is more about the engineering of the water flow, that's very subjective.
It is explicit in that it is an architectural feature.
I agree with that. It is on per view.
We have jurisdiction. I mean, that's.
But I'm trying to find out a way to consistently.
What?
I agree. It is our jurisdiction. What I was trying to figure out was a way to consistently apply it and how we could transfer it to this.
But it won't be consistently applied because it's going to be fact driven in each application. What, where an appropriate place to put it is going to be fact driven. But you have jurisdiction to have the least, uh, or the, the best possible impact on the historic resource. So that's all that's giving, that's, that's how you get there.
So just, to put this to them. There's no, there's no speci- There's no separate section in our, um, design standards that speaks to gutters and downspouts. When I'm looking at our, the roofing section here. And it's not, I, I think our, our design standards are silent.
That's what I thought.
On gutters and downspouts. Now, gutters are, gutters are gutters and if they're shaped, then we, we know how to deal with those. But downspouts and direction of downspouts, there's.
But more important than the guidelines is our code, which tells us what we are required to do. This is nice. This is a supplement. The code is what we start with. And the code says you have jurisdiction of these because it's an exterior architectural feature. So.
I was only saying, you know, guidance.
That's what I was saying too. I agree. There's jurisdiction. We have no guidance that's already.
Well, the guidance, when you, when you don't have the design guidelines to guide you, then you go to the, you go to the secondary standards and you start with a code. That's where you start. But, you know, there are guidelines in our code generally about how you, what you apply to every application and how you do it. Considerations you must consider. So that's, that's the starting place is the code. And then hopefully there might be some guidelines. If there's not, you stay with the code and apply the code. So that's how you do it. My judgment.
I feel like that's what we were doing. I was just simply asking for guidelines for applying where we're at. So, um, I, I, any more discussion for?
No. Virginia?
No. I have nothing else to say unless you want me to make a motion. I don't have anything else. I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with the, um, condition that the
Duct work.
Ducting. The ducting, um, piping be painted to match the house as soon as weather permits.
Absolutely. I second.
Can I number several?
Yes.
Number seven?
Yes.
Number five?
Yes.
Any feedback?
Not an adverse impact.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no adverse. Well. There's no adverse impact to the structure.
And it's removable. Not a permanent condition.
Okay. I, I don't know what went on here, but it sounded like a horror show from what you said. On behalf of myself, as I sit here at this table, I apologize.
No, no, I.
Well, you would have given a stop work order in the middle of winter.
Well, threatened with it.
Getting your heating, your heat replaced.
Yeah.
But I would. I also love.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Can I just get a clarification? Does she need to submit anything to this board when she has painted?
Make sure you're square with the building. No, no, not it.
Okay, okay.
Make sure you're square with the building.
Got everything.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Twenty-seven circle, quarter circle is not coming. Do you need to mediate?
Okay. Nothing for twenty-five South Main, no one for twenty-five South Main Street yet?
No, they didn't sign.
Oh, they hadn't signed the application. Thank you.
The owner hadn't signed.
Okay. You said that and it's already slipped my mind. Yes.
So you're the business owner? Congratulations.
Lucky me. No, it's good.
All right. So this is just a proposal of new signage?
Yes.
I, I only have one question.
I hope I can answer it for you.
Oh yeah, that's okay. So in the signage size, the square footage is, is acceptable. Off of my calculations, but it says that it's three millimeter thick. Die-bond sign. Is it only three millimeters thick?
That's what he said. Steve looked it over and he said it was okay. I don't know, but.
I'm not saying, I'm not.
Size should be.
Well, three millimeters, there's twenty-four millimeters in an inch.
Right. Maybe not.
He may need this new lettering.
Maybe.
The lettering on the sign is, because it's painted down.
That was all I was going to say is to make sure that you're not buying a really thin sign.
Thin piece of paper.
I'm not saying that's going to, what we have overview.
I'll verify that with him just to double check.
You're not getting.
Yes, a piece of paper on the building.
It was.
I doubt, I doubt it is.
I don't want to do this again. I think he's done signs throughout the village too. So I think he was familiar with what he had to, you know, give me as far as what would be approved.
Um, Virginia, that's, that's the only thing that I had right up top.
Could we call him? Right now.
It may be in that centimeters. Two point five four centimeters is an inch. Because three millimeters is.
It, it's, is it, what is, I'm sorry, what is the material? Is it, is it metal? Is it a metal sign? I think that's my concern.
With gold vinyl lettering border.
Well, it's not wood.
Die-bond. I don't know what die-bond is exactly, but he came out and.
Did he show you something?
No, he didn't show me anything, but I, um, I know he came out and he looked at the building and he knew, you know, obviously he had his elements, but I'm not real sure. Steve said that it all looked okay and that we were okay to go.
Location. That's true, yeah.
Die-bond. I think it, it might be aluminum. Die-bond signs are made from an aluminum composite material. So.
Oh yeah.
Little things, yeah.
Yeah.
How's it going to be fastened? Do you know?
Yeah, the screws, it was all very laid out. I just don't roll it in there. Screw mounting. White gold in color. Do you not think that aluminum is? I'm not loving the aluminum material for it and maybe I'm alone on that. So I will.
What would you rather? See what our sign, if our, if our design standards, um, speak to materials and I feel they probably do.
I've never signed up before, so you got to tell me what you think. I like the design.
Yeah, yeah.
Aesthetically, I like all of that.
So the sign was there before, so it was a salon prior to us.
And kind of just matched it to what they had just for fees. But, um, so I think it was sort of similar. I sent him what she had and he matched it to what she had.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to read from a hundred, page one hundred and three of our design standards. Sign design considerations. First bullet is appropriate sign materials include wood, metal, medium density fiberboard and heavy duty urethane foam. While plastic is not a traditional material, some plastic signs may be appropriate. So metal.
So metal counts, fine. Right, because wood wouldn't really work, right? Wood wouldn't work.
Wood would work.
Yeah, wood would. Would it withstand?
Yeah, you'd be surprised. You might have to paint it every pan full years, but it's, it would survive. The right wood.
Okay, and then plastic isn't. It's a hard one. So he said thick die-bond, so maybe it's a thicker metal. I don't know.
Well, it's three millimeters. He's given a dimension.
So should I tell him we want something thicker than that or is this going to be, is it okay?
It's your sign.
All right, so if.
Yeah, I want you to know that.
I don't really want to pay for another sign once we get this sign up, so I'm hoping I like it.
We're not going to tell you it's too thick.
Okay.
Right.
It meets our guidelines.
There's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, it meets our guidelines. This is more of like an advisory saying that's a pretty thin sign. If he says I have confidence in that sign, then that's, we're not going to tell you not to buy it. Yes. But that caught my eye, saying that's a very thin sign, just as, just so you don't make the mistake or something like.
Okay. So let's go with it. If something happens where I decide in the next couple of weeks that I decide I want thicker, do I do this all over again?
I think we can keep your application open.
Yeah, okay. We can come back, but. But if I decide I leave here, I'm like, okay, this is what they say. This is appropriate, then.
Thickness of the sign, thickness of the metal, when you're talking about millimeters, it's not, in my opinion, it's not going to be visible. If it was, you know, if you were putting up a sign made of wood, now it's going to be, you know, well, if it's thick, we'd want to know that, but if it's millimeters in difference.
Okay.
Personally, I don't think it makes.
None of them say.
So if I tell him I want it a little bit thicker, just because you guys brought that to me, because I have no idea. This is my, you don't know what you don't know, right?
Man, it being a different material, I don't know.
If it's a diff, obviously, okay, I'll let them.
If you still have their signs in the village and they are the same material, ask them where they are and go look at them. And then you can make a decision for yourself whether or not.
We want to, so but as of now, if I decide when we leave here, I can call them up and say it's a go, then this is okay. Once you vote. Once you vote, once the vote is in.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the sign.
I'll second.
Can I number several?
Yes.
Number seven?
Yes.
Number five?
Yes.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Sure.
All right.
You have fun.
All right, we'll see. I'll, I'll research that a little bit and see.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you heard.
I'm not hearing you now.
It's in compliance with our guidelines and code. It's removable. Does not negatively impact.
I actually didn't ask whether our larger, um, pictures of the building last.
Oh, for five, for instance, yeah.
Would you want the larger? Yes, how are you?
Would you be okay with you all if I stood up?
Sure.
And you can go in here. And I'm just more comfortable presenting.
You've been here before. Not, not this year, because you've been here before.
I have been here for the, um, for a planning board concept review on our first. So, so my name is Chuck Vancini and, um, I'm here today to introduce. So my name is Chuck Vancini, and I'm here today to introduce a proposed plan to open a cafe at Five State Street. And you'll remember that Five State Street is where Starbucks used to be for many, many years. So it's been a cafe before. It's next to the Village Bakery. And Starbucks, of course, moved down to the new library. Most recently, Rachel's has been there. You might have seen that Rachel's is closed for renovations. And so that's where the cafe would go. Joining me is Ryan Kelly. He's with RPK Landscape Architects. And we've got a pretty dramatic plan for this building. So we know that our plans are gonna require approvals from the Planning and Zoning Board, from the Village Board Trustees, and from you all, the local Preservation Board. So today, we're not here to seek approval. Because it's such a significant project, we wanted to review it so that you can start thinking about it. We wanna provide you as much information as you're interested in today. We love to have your input. We love to hear any areas that you think are gonna be your primary areas of consideration over the next month as you assess our proposal. And then if you have any concerns, like if there's, if there's anything that jumps out and you go, well, you know what, that's really gonna be a nonstarter, the sooner we know, the sooner we can address it. So we're going to planning and zoning for approval on April fifth. If we get that, we'll be at the Village Board Trustees on the thirteenth. And hopefully we'll be back here on April seventeenth. So that's kind of the timeline that we're working at it. So at high level, the cafe is gonna be the first licensed location of a well-known cycling cafe in Girona, Spain. So the owners of that cafe, one of whom is a former pro cyclist and his wife, they developed this cafe starting in two thousand and fourteen, opened in two thousand and fifteen. Today, the cafe is known throughout the cycling community. This cycling cafe has forty-four thousand followers on Instagram. It's.
What part of Spain?
What's that?
Where are they in Spain?
In Girona, Spain. So Girona is a city of about a hundred thousand north of Barcelona, but south of the French border. So it's in Catalonia. It's a medieval city. It's a lovely medieval city. And you talk about preserving history in Pittsburgh. They have preserved the old town of Girona at a remarkable level. You can walk around half the city on a two-thousand-year-old Roman wall that's then restored. The streets are cobbled, old buildings, pedestrian only, oozes character. And about twenty-five years ago, pro cyclists started moving there because of cost of living and amazing cycling in that Costa Brava region. You can easily get to the Pyrenees, it's just amazing. And so the pros also love it because it's got great transportation links. So there's a high, the TGV High Speed Train Line from France that comes into Spain, goes right through Girona on the way to Barcelona. Barcelona is only thirty-nine minutes by train or maybe ninety minutes by car, so you can easily get to the international airport. There's a small airport just outside the city with cheap ride here and easy jet flights all over Europe. So for pro cyclists, it's fantastic. So what's happened is all the foreigners to Europe, all the non-European pros have moved there. And it is the unofficial pro cycling capital of Europe. And over the last twenty-five years, it's just cycling that steroid. So this former pro, his name is Christian Meyer. He's from Canada, so it's his wife Amber. When he moved over to Europe after getting a pro contract, he moved to Girona. He cycled with one of the pro teams, you know, he's cycled the Giro, the two of the Volta de España, the Tour de France, all the big rides. But he and his wife love coffee. Now, Spain is not known for its coffee. There's a lot of coffee shops, but the coffee's not very good. Well, Christian and his wife decided to do something about it. And so they opened this coffee shop. When they first opened, people said they were crazy because you could buy an espresso in town for one euro. Why someone even pay two euros? But Christian is passionate about coffee, and the coffee was amazing. And quickly, they became the place to go. Amber has a degree in hospitality. She made the place beautiful. Of course, everything is cycling motif, everything is historic, and this place has taken off. Well, there, I've got a note down over the past, I've been going to Girona since two thousand and nineteen. I've got a note, Christian and Amber, and they, I asked them, would you ever license a, license me your cafe? And they said, they, well, they assessed me, they reviewed me, that they weren't aware of Pittsburgh because Pittsburgh is on the radar in the cycling community right now. Because there are two pro, there's one pro cyclist from Pittsburgh, and there's another up and coming guy who everybody expects to be a pro within a year or two from Pittsburgh, cycling over in Europe and just tearing up the cycling.
And all the cyclists are next door at BBC right now, so.
Well, one of these is Magnus Sheffield. He drives for the Ineos team. He's already won races, he's twenty years old. He's already won these major pro races against the top pros. Just this year, of the races he's been entering, he's like in the top twenty to thirty. The guy's just amazing at age twenty, and that's really young in pro cycling. There's another young man, AJ August, who's just lighting up the junior circuit. His father is Andy August, who used to own the park at the bike shop. And AJ is on everybody's radar. In fact, I'm gonna give you just a copy of an article that talks about Pittsburgh. So Pittsburgh is on the radar. Christian and Amber say, Chuck, we like your vision, we like your approach. Tell us about Pittsburgh. I did. And so they have said, we approve it, but they have some conditions. One of the conditions is you have to find a location in an area with a historic feel, and you've gotta have an outdoor courtyard. So I retired about, maybe a little over a year and a half ago. I had been looking for buildings to either buy or lease.
Do you own this building?
No.
Okay.
But I've arranged a lease between Rachel's and the owner. The owner is Mike Reynolds. And between Rachel's, either I'll do a sublet from Rachel's or I'll do a new lease with Mike Reynolds, one or the other. And, but, the only way I'm gonna do this lease is if I can get approval for a courtyard. Because that's one of the contingency of the lease. So I reviewed the space with La Fabrica. La Fabrica is the name of this cafe in Girona. They said, if you can replace the parking lot with a courtyard, you can have the space. We actually showed pictures of the interior. They're gonna give me design, they're gonna basically help me with the design, but it's gonna be a cycling-centric design with all kinds of cool old lighting and old, you know, cycling frames, bicycle frames. Amber is passionate about greenery, so one of her mandates is I have to have fresh flowers every week. I mean, there's all these contingencies. Well, interior is one thing, but the exterior is the topic today. So I'm excited about this, in part because this parking lot is an eyesore. It's never been deemed like, oh, that is such a cruel parking lot. It's also been a traffic hazard.
It's a dead trap. It's awful.
And it only worked because of Starbucks. And anything else has always been a hard.
And I will say that during COVID, we had tables out there.
Yeah.
For Rachel's. But we're waiting for the planning board then to give us the approval on it. And our job tonight is to talk about the materials in that courtyard. So that's what we should.
Well, not just materials, but the.
Design, but that's what we're talking about, not the interior, not the, whether it's allowed or not, but what we feel about the design materials.
So I wrote the Capri Henson Plan that came out in two thousand and nineteen, and it's like, well, what I wanna do with the space aligns perfectly. I mean, we're trying to promote cycling and increase the neighborhood, create more community, create more green space. This just aligns it really tightly. So when I sat down with Ryan and the rest of, I have another architect, David Hamlin. We've got engineers from Marathon. So these were the requirements I gave them. First of all, it has to have historic character. Number two, to create that old world character and charm, I want cobblestones. More importantly, because I'm a skier and I've been out less a number of times, I want the cobblestones radiant heated. So that when it snows, the snow melts, I don't have to worry about shoveling the cobbles, and I can use that courtyard year-round. Because I'll also be putting in radiant heaters underneath specialty umbrella tables when the wind isn't, you know, at ridiculous levels. Number three, I said, I'd really like you to try to replicate the atmosphere of La Fabrica Girona, which means it has to be inviting. It has to have some level of intimacy, and it must include greenery. The fourth condition, the design must fit seamlessly in and respect the historic character of the village. The fifth, the courtyard must be sufficiently large to accommodate forty or more customers at outdoor tables. At least one would should be communal, but a lot of four, and four-seater and two-seater tables. This is key. I can't make my business case work without those outdoor seats. The building, I mean, I think everybody here understands Pittsburgh rents, Pittsburgh Village rents aren't cheap. Taxes aren't cheap, and labor is not cheap. In order to make the business case work with a small property, the only way it's gonna do is if I can fit the outdoor tables. And then finally, I asked for three things, which you'll see here in a minute. I asked for an area for parking bicycles and parking them securely. So I wanted a dedicated bike parking area. I wanted enclosed area where the cyclists could hose off their bikes if they're dusty or muddy or dirty, because you know, you come from the tow path or you've been out on a fat bike ride, your bike's pretty dirty. And then my third ask was, I wanted a fountain with historic character where they could fill on water bottles. So the teams come up with what I think is an amazingly thoughtful and beautiful design. Ryan is gonna go into that for you. But I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So first of all, I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time on the background, but I did bring a background document that each of you can take away. It has a short narrative. Jeff, you can have one too. And Megan, I don't know if you've seen this version. But the, in there, there's a four-page narrative of how to keep together what Girona's like. There's pictures of what La Fabrica is in Girona, and then there's pictures of what Ryan's gonna review. And finally, at the back is the article that I mentioned.
April seventeenth is our next meeting. I would be in Barcelona.
No way. Well, if you want to.
So I have some, I will, I'll take this into consideration. I'm going out there for business on the seventeenth and eighteenth. I'm flying out on the twelfth. So I will be, I'm not gonna get this meeting, but I might be here.
Okay, so.
This better be true, because I'd like to do some HPV research.
Also, I'll be here on the seventeenth. Ryan and David will be representing me on the seventeenth. On the seventeenth, I will be in Girona, because they go a week's worth of meetings there.
Oh, nice.
And so if you would like to take the train up to Girona, I will take you to La Fabrica and introduce you to the owners.
That's terrible.
You can experience it. So one thing I wanted to mention, you know, I know this isn't the purview of this committee, but I've got lots of questions like, what's gonna be different than the Village Bakery? Well, first of all, I think you'll see the coffee and food is gonna be very different. It's gonna be a very differentiated product. But most importantly, and I'll just share this with you, we are not gonna be a cafe that caters to two types of people that typically go to cafes. One type is a person that wants to run in and out and get a quick coffee in a paper cup and take it away. That's not our target market. We may offer a paper cup from time to time, but what we're gonna be doing is you're gonna come in and sit down, and you're gonna get custom crockery like this. And you will get latte art with your espresso drink. So everything is gonna be with a historic feel. It's not gonna be the run-and-gun paper. This is gonna be elegant, historic. We want you to sit and savor the coffee and enjoy the experience. The second thing is, we're not gonna be catering to the remote work crowd. In fact, we will have signage. This is not a remote work location. There's gonna be no internet, no public internet provided. We don't want, because we're not gonna be offering parking, we don't want people going into the lot across the street and parking here for six hours while they work in our cafe. No, this is a place for community. And so we're gonna do everything within our power to foster that. This is what they've done in Girona. And Amber tells me, if they see somebody sitting on a laptop, they walk up to them and gently say, we're not a week work, we're not a remote work location, you know, please wrap up. Our tables are for people, friends and family and visitors that wanna sit and socialize. That's who we're targeting. So that's gonna be my market, and you can see that that's gonna come into play with a lot of decisions that the planning board has. But for now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan to just share about the design and what we're thinking.
All right. So I brought a few copies just to see the larger images specific to materials. And thanks, Chuck, for all of that. So we were tasked with really dovetailing all of that together.
And if you wanna see really zoomed-in renderings?
Yeah.
These are some much, much larger renderings, if that's important.
Yeah, since it's in black, it's just a little bit larger. Yeah. So all the materials, we have selected our, the renderers, they did a great job of representing those in 3D. So as Chuck mentioned, dovetailing all of that onto a site that drops three feet in reach toward the street was fairly challenging. And so our design challenge was probably to make this feel pedestrian, welcoming on the interior, but at the same time, public facing on the outside. And so what we ended up proposing was lifting the parking lot up so it's a tabletop and similar, essentially a flush walkout of the restaurant. And with that said, we came in, we proposed some screen walls on the west property line, that stair step. The screen wall would be essentially an extension of the building and then stair stepping down. So our intent was to have three-foot walls on the interior. The challenge with that is the grade slopes dramatically on the outside, which is not welcoming to any outdoor seating. So we really worked hard to get the drainage right. And so we lifted the entire parking lot up on the north base, so it's essentially flush walkout, two percent away. And these walls will vary in height on the outside as you get further away from the building, if that makes sense. But starting early from the courtyard out, we tried to create this welcoming pedestrian portal. So this would be the grand entry. Currently, La Fabrica would have two entries. Primarily, customer facing would be through this entry, employee entry through the side.
I'm assuming that there's an ADA compliant entry? It seemed like there were only stairs out front.
Yeah, it's right here.
Just couldn't see it at first.
It's right here.
Thank you.
Yep, so ADA compliance from the walkway up, and we were able to achieve that through retained walls. And so primarily, neat natural materials. As Chuck mentioned, he has a very clear vision. And in dovetailing that with the historic character, we selected granite cobbles, which are reclaimed in the northeast, and we found a local supplier, which are a phenomenal product. Those would be wet set for that radiant heat. So everywhere we have proposed hard skate, we have two materials. One, the primary material would be granite cobble surfacing. Secondly, would be the ADA compliance ramp from the walkway, which we're proposing a concrete material for that. But we'd essentially have a decorative handrail proposed on, when we're showing these images here. Renderers do a great job to communicate wall materials. Wall materials, we have two different types of stone. We have been really driven for the constructability. The main pillars at the front of the entry portal would be out of masonry build. Those would be selected of split-face veneer. Both essentially match, but they're two very different materials. The split-face veneer would be porcelain, shown here in the middle. We're going very much for cooler grays and warmer grays throughout the wall systems. And surfacing, just to get that to blend with La Fabrica's branding. We're really trying to pull that copper and just those earth tones out of the interior. And so, all that said, we have two different wall systems and then natural stone capping. Indiana limestone's a phenomenal product. We have that for all of our camping and also the steps. Moving past that. Moving past that, as part of making the interior feel intimate and welcoming, we really opened up the view to the northeast. So we have tiered seating proposed, which is emulated in this photo here would be permanent seating, cedar benches that would be really more of that public, somewhat urban, but historical feel is what we were going for. But really, that, you know, being mindful of crime prevention and just sight lines, we really opened up that whole northeast view. So all view sheds, I think, would be very welcoming. Moving past that, on the east property line, as Chuck mentioned, bike parking is a significant piece of this program. We have foot traffic to Village Bakery. We did not want to heat on that, so we have proposed cedar fencing. It's essentially a buffer along the east property line that both stairs step with the grade that provides twofold bike storage that can be vertically mounted to create circulation for pedestrian and bike traffic, but also to screen our bike washing station. Our existing entry here, like I said, will be converted to employee entry only, and primary traffic, ADA and customers will come through the main door. Water feature currently proposed is a wall-mounted, off-the-shelf product that really has some custom feel to it. We spoke to the La Fabbrica branding, and it's just very functional too with bike parking. This will be a primary step up to the courtyard space. Furnishings are shown, essentially conceptual at this point, but just to give a sense of space planning and also just occupancy. We thought this was a great starting point. But as Chuck mentioned, we have some materials there. On the landscape side, I'm going to switch gears if you don't have any park skate questions. We have.
Okay, moment.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering about the masonry block that the building itself is built out of.
Yep.
Is very unique, very old, it has a particular pattern to it. I know you can't get it anymore.
Correct.
The house I lived on, lived on on Lincoln Avenue had that for the foundation. It's common around the village. There's a house right at the end of Sutherland and Monroe. I'm concerned about the masonry materials being proposed, and I don't know, I guess I would have to see. I don't know what's better, to try to match it and not make it, or something totally different.
Yeah.
Yeah, but don't try to kind of make it look like it. And it looks like, it's a little hard to tell what the texture is on this Caesar ceramic, but it looks pretty, the color looks good, but it looks really flat. So I don't know. I would have to, when it's actually reviewed, I would suggest that you bring a material and maybe there'd be a site meeting, because at least these pillars are gigantic. If you want design feedback, okay, give me a deal now. I think the pillars are immense. I think they're oversized for the building. And I recognize that this isn't standing on a sidewalk, this is a computer-generated look.
I think we've got a.
But I still, no, I know what it looks like.
Yeah, so you're saying these are just too big?
They're too big. They, it appears and.
Here's a measurement.
Well, no, I know, well, I can't read the, I'm sorry. My glasses on, I cannot read that vertical dimension, but they're bulky, and I think they're too bulky. And a perspective drawing like this is always, you know, as an architect and as a design reviewer, as I do here, I like perspectives. I prefer to see traditional elevations. The rendering here for that, I mean, it just, you can barely see the building. So the historic element that you want to really maintain is the building. So to put this massive, and I think having an entry gate is great. I mean, I like the concept. I think the size is too big.
Okay, so, I mean, we can start to explore stealing that down. That's something that's.
And the other thing, I'm looking at A2, drawing 2 on page A2.0, which is the one right, no, not there. I'm looking back, I'm looking to the southwest where there's the new wall, the masonry wall you mentioned. To me, again, that's very massive. The Phoenix Building is a truly important and significant building in the community, and I recognize it's a drive-through there, but maybe something, again, a little lighter weight. I think the new masonry elements that you're introducing are too large a scale for the site and the building. The rest of it I love.
Appreciate your feedback. And just starting with the last piece first, I think, you know, one of the early renditions we talked about with Chuck was, you know, if we're making this kind of investment, staring at a parking lot is just less than ideal. So raising up that hall.
No, that's. That's great, that's totally great. That parking lot, I agree with Kendra, it's a death trap. That whole, that whole piece right there is very dangerous.
Oh, and you're talking about the adjacent parking lot.
Talking about the two parking lots, yes, they are, are terrible.
Going off of Virginia's comment, if you look at the image on the top left, which is 6 on page 2, you can see the gray foundation of the Phoenix Hotel Building, but then on image 2, you're almost covering up the first floor windows. That's the view shed that Virginia's talking about, is to not interrupt that building's view shed.
This here?
Yes. And I would argue the fact that, I guess, southeast, the southeast wall is a little bit more appropriate, and I know that it grows as the parking lot grades towards the street. And the first thing that I saw when looking at this, not only I think it's a really good option, and I'm excited for things like this in the village, but those pillars are larger than the human scale, and they do interrupt the historic. The reason that we're here is for the building. It's hiding that building in the bottom right image. So those are just.
It's the human scale.
The human scale, yeah.
I'm glad you said that. They're towering compared to a.
Everything's meant to be pedestrian in our town, you know, pedestrian signing, walkways, crosswalks. We bumped everything out to be more pedestrian friendly. So those are, that's my only comments. The things that I had written down was, I already asked you if you were the owner of the building, but if you go on our website, the building design standards are, have you been through all of those?
I would have memorized it, definitely.
Okay, yeah. Well, I was, I was actually going to print them out to make sure you had them, but there's the section 6 is the business district standards. So just reviewing those and looking at any options that you can incorporate to help it make the feel that we have in our village stay there.
Absolutely.
And I think, you know, what Virginia said, I like the complement to the building. I think it fits well, and I think one of the things that I liked the most about this is getting rid of the driveway curb and making that grass. And I thought that was, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great use of the space.
I didn't speak much about the landscape too. And we're showing grass in the renderings, but these green space areas are heavily landscaged, made of, made of floral color. And so it's just, it's a little difficult to show landscape in 3D.
I'll ask this to Jeff.
Plus some obscure.
Exactly, so that also softens everything we talked about.
Just protect it in the winter with some sort of snow plants or something like that for the claw.
It's pretty easy, yeah. It's pretty simple, yeah. Just a quick note on the materials. We thought, so agreed on the architecture 100%. Our thought process was, this is going to be extremely busy surface, granite cobbles, it's very small head and very chopped up, so we went larger, chunkier on the wall blocks. So those are going to be more in a 10-inch by 12-inch dimension. The porcelain veneer on the bigger columns, regardless, we can change the dimension of that, but those are more in a 12 by 24, and everything is split face, so it's very textured. So it is a little different, but we thought it would complement a smaller pattern.
That's the intent of new construction in a historic district. You don't want to try to fool anybody to think it's original, and you do want it to complement, which was my point about the rusticated block on the building. You're never going to find anything that's like that. They're just, they don't make it anymore. So picking a material that's compatible, I'm sure is going to be difficult.
Sure. So I mean, all that said, are there still concerns about the existing wall materials that we have shown? Is there any?
What I've read on the drawings is you're not doing anything to the, through the building itself, painting.
We're painting it, I mean, so it's going to be the darker colors, and then that, the signage, the strip. Our intent is to make that real wood, because La Fabbrica is really big on the dark colors, the woods, the copper, I mean, and greenery. Every time I talk to them, they say, "Look at Chuck, the design has to have these things." So what the architecture team has done there with the wood panel, it'd be the exact same size as it's currently there with Rachel's, and then the La Fabbrica logo in black.
I love the pink, it brings people in.
I'll only just play, you know, some sort of advocate to the sign. Does that sign linear feet come into, or is it square footage, come into the size of the building width?
It's, yes, they will have, when they get ready, they'll have to get a sign from it, you know, say.
Right, but does that, but that sign is, are you saying that that entire piece of wood is the sign?
No.
No, no, it's just the letters.
It's a sign.
So that's an architecture feature change on the building?
What is it already?
It's probably metal, it's like a metal ivy. It's a metal ivy.
I don't think it's, it wouldn't be an exposed structural ivy. Do you know what the material is on it?
I believe it's aluminum, but I don't know for certain.
Yeah, it's not, the element, the design element there is intended to be a sign panel. And I, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah. So.
Again, I'm fine, I'm just asking if it fits, you know, what we're doing with a sign, you know, linear feet.
The La Fabbrica sign will be no wider than Rachel's. I mean, it will be no wider than that.
The sign, the sign is the letters of it. I mean, there's sign panels like.
So putting that siding on the historic building, that's nothing that we have to take into consideration?
I think if that's what they want personally, if that's what they want to use for the sign panel, I like it better than aluminum. I don't know what might end up in aluminum. I don't remember, you know, that used to be a garage. I don't know what, I don't know what was there.
Do you know what I'm saying though?
I do agree with you, I thank you for bringing that.
This is information only, I'm not information only, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I hear your point, I think it was well placed, and yes, we should consider it. And ultimately, I would agree with Jenny that the wood is more appropriate for an eatery. It's going to enhance the architectural features as opposed to the garage view that you have at this point, and it is just part of, it's not the sign, but it is the sign placard of it.
If they, if they were to take the aluminum off, which I would assume you do, take the aluminum off, see what's, see what's behind there. Who knows what's behind there? I don't have a blue sheet for it in my hand, so I don't, and there would be an historic photo of it, so you might be able to tell from that. Have you looked at the blue sheets on the Village website?
I have not.
Because, do you know what I mean?
No.
So, yeah.
Yes, there, it's an historic resource survey document, they're called Blue Sheets, because the ship I used to print my newspaper. They're not blue, but that's, that's what they're called, and if you look online, they will print us blue, because all of ours are from like 1976, somewhere around there. If you pull that off and you find a material underneath there, you know, maybe it's usable, maybe it's not, and maybe we, depending on what it was, maybe you can force to use it, maybe not. But also, just because it's part of the building envelope and it's been covered, looking behind there is a good idea. In case it's, in case there's moisture infiltration that you can't see until you take off, if that makes sense.
Does, I mean, any of that, since it's an existing condition, does any of that play into upgrading with a wood material that's essentially approved?
That's what, that was my question. Because then if someone comes in with a sign that is the complete linear foot of any other building in town, and they say, "Well, it's, that's not the sign, the signs only are letters."
That's clearly, Dan, that's clearly defined. What is the sign part of it?
Yeah.
It's clearly defined.
Yeah, okay.
And that's really not for this board. That's for the quoting. But you do, you are going to have to deal with this change in architectural future. I think that's more important. Doesn't mean you're going to say, "No, you just have to deal with it."
Do you have any questions on the lighting news?
Not.
Outside of the pillars that we already talked about?
Not yet.
Right, I want to know what the umbrellas are too. Like, I've got lots of ideas once we know if this is approved or not, because you had said there's going to be fancy lights and heating and the umbrellas, so I want to know what that's going to like, but.
All lighting proposed is low voltage. We have existing lighting on global, those state points. So this will not be a night time use, so I think just consistency wise. We have an existing street light on street level. Everything in pink is, are under cat lights. Everything's low voltage meets here, lumen count, and everything is dark skies, compliant. We have a couple updates on, not a couple, we have one update on the two main pillars. Obviously, it sounds like those are going to change in dimension, so that may be something we take back to the design shop and see if that's still a good fit. But we have a pillar of cat light proposed on top of the two main pillars. Again, that would be low voltage. We came up with this back today, I'm happy to show you a cut sheet tonight, or we can save that for the 17th of next month. We just, we looked at that as just a great opportunity to pull some of the branding out.
Yeah.
We see copper at least once at the entry, we see it again on the water feature, and then we see that on the interior.
Yeah, so the reason this is so helpful for us, and we're going to take this feedback into immediate account, is my, I really need to open sometime in August in order to make this work. And so we've actually got the construction team lined up. If we can get approval by the end of April from the village, construction will start in May, in June, maybe a little bit early July. The interior will likely start in June and a little bit early July, because the interior is required a huge amount, it's mainly decorative and aesthetics. And then we, you know, we have a site for a few weeks for training our team. Some of our team will actually train in Spain. Our full-time employees will go to Spain for training, which is going to be a nice perk for them. But our goal is to open sometime in early August so that we catch that summer season where the village can really experience it.
When is the big golf tournament?
I know, if only it were going to be done in the UK in May, but last, that's not going to happen.
After that, May 2.
Next round.
May 2.
Thank you.
So we don't intend to be open at night. Right now, our hours are tentatively seven to three. Most days, we're probably going to be closed one day a week, I'm thinking Tuesdays will be closed. Sundays will be noon to four, but, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be doing evenings unless.
You don't want to be Sunday mornings for the bike cycling crowd?
So we want to catch the brunch crowd on Sunday, but we'll do that at noon. We really, we really just want to encourage, you know, Sunday morning is a day of rest for so many people, and we just want to encourage that kind of Sabbath day for our employees. And then, you know, everybody, the employees will roll in around 11 on Sundays, and we'll be open for brunch, you know, from noon on, and we anticipate that will be a very busy time. Right now, we're not anticipating private functions, but if cycling groups say, "Hey, look at Chuck, we love you, you know, we want to, we want to have our annual meeting there, can we open up in the evening?" We'll do that kind of one-off. At Christmas, of course, when the village is having, you know, their events, we'll open up for that kind of thing. But it's primarily going to be a daytime operation.
But it's primarily going to be a daytime operation. The lighting will be important early mornings in the winter, because we're opening at seven, it's still dark. But in the evenings, you know, one of the questions is, what do you do in the courtyard when it's open like that? And our feeling is, we're going to have security cameras, we'll have the lighting, we'll likely leave it open, we'll have signage that will, of course, close. And that's one of the helpful things about having the pillars, is we can put a stand-up heavy base sign there that says, "Now that it's not where you're enclosed," but if people want to go and sit in the courtyard, we're not, we're going to be fine with that as long as we can secure the tables, right? And so we'll be focused on security. But it might get used. I mean, we want this to be something that the community feels like is theirs, is part of the village. So...
Are there inline skaters in the village?
I don't see them.
You don't see them?
No.
They used to live across from you.
I'm sure they're out there, but...
What, I lived across from the rec. I lived across from the rec. Parents would come and drop their kids off at the rec, and they'd be there all day long on their inline skates, riding down the handrails, you know, wherever. And I, I don't live in the village every time, so I have no understanding...
We're going to have to be very careful at prohibiting that. Obviously, from insurance standpoint, I can't take that risk.
Right.
The cobbles are a lot too.
Yeah.
You know, thank you for reminding me of that, because I don't think the life stage went very well. It's a very good plan.
Skateboard cobbles are really helpful, just notice this pattern recognition, seems like that's been very popular.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that feedback, very valuable.
Good.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks for coming, such a great new business.
Yeah.
I'm excited.
Can I wash my dog at the bike stand?
Yes.
After she stumps up, jumps in the canal?
Yeah, you're welcome to. Do you want any of these, these larger printouts? I'll pick them up. No, I'm good with the bullet. All right. Can I keep the bullet? Yeah.
I don't want to keep them from you.
Oh, you want me to keep them if you want them?
I'm sure they'll come back at the next meeting for us.
That would be fantastic.
These have to be new, right?
Yeah, no submissions.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Especially all the...
Yeah, thank you.
This was awesome. There's another one.
Take the coffee cups.
It's seven in the morning.
I can't wait for the last part. I like parts in mine.
Yeah, if we can replicate the beauty of Jerrona, if we can execute, I think this is going to be transformational for us. There's nothing, nothing like it. I'm a coffee shop, and I wish some places in the city or here in the village, and I think we might actually help the game on what's in the city.
I hope so. Even here, I hope we help figure them on coffee.
The team from Toa Half Bike is real excited.
Oh, I can only imagine the synergy there, yeah.
They're just like, we're reviewing, really want to see it happen, Chuck. Please do that. All right, so let's talk about, let's go through the minutes. We have two sets of minutes?
Yeah.
All right, February 27th. Monroe Garage, any questions on that? Helmuth Drive Garage Door.
I have nothing. I have no changes or comments.
So Megan, this is kind of where it gets a little confusing. We have, we go from the Monroe Avenue Garage, and then we go to the Helmuth Drive Garage Door, which is where I voted no, because it was going from wood to metal. And I opposed that.
Oh, did I?
Then you, you must have copied and pasted throughout the rest of them, because I have, you have voted me no on everything else. You voted me no.
No, 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 no. Yeah, you were so harsh at that last...
Well, I don't want to make jokes of it, because this is serious. If I'm mistaken, it is, this is a very big draw.
Okay, I'm really sorry about that.
You even voted no on the minutes.
I'm closing the minutes. I'm closing the meetings, mark it down as no. So, yeah.
Okay, I did copy and paste. I apologize.
And then, and then it goes on to the next ones also. So I don't know if you have to go back and check to make sure you actually wrote down all of the correct votes from both those two meetings.
Okay, I know that you were the only no on that one line. Yes, because I did...
But then you have to go back and check to me, I don't know. I'm only going to speak for myself, but I can't remember everybody else's votes.
I will read these, but I do know because you were the only no in both meetings on that one item.
I can't comment on that, but I'll...
I'll check and I'll redo it. Oh, my gosh. So do we just table these till next time?
Probably, yeah. We'll table them till next time and see if everything's right.
I wasn't at the next meeting. I'm, I'm still operating.
Yeah, because there's only two about Sunday next week. So Megan, if you fix that, just go back and check to make sure everybody's accurate on that.
Thank you.
And then we'll be good there. So let's make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second the motion you just made.
Thank you.
Okay, number four.
Yes.
Number evidence.
Either way, I'm on it.
Yes.
Motion passed. All right.
Okay, good evening, folks. Sorry to be late.